All right, welcome everybody to the December seventeenth regular meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Calabasas. We have all commissioners present with the exception of Commissioner Harrison, who is having technical difficulties and will hopefully join us very shortly. Okay, Commissioner Milstein, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America. For which it stands.
One nation. Under God. Indivisible. Justice. Thank you. All right, are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Do we have any announcements or introductions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Washburn?
I have a quick one. I attended the Valley Economic Alliance annual meeting this morning, which was conducted by our former mayor, Fred Gaines, and a nice presentation was made by our outgoing mayor, James Basajin, on the progress of our city in the past year, along with the other cities of Los Angeles and Burbank, Glendale, and San Fernando. It was an in-person meeting at the Valley Relics Museum, and it was obviously COVID correct because everybody had to have their vaccination forms in the hands of the folks at the Valley Economic Alliance. But the attendance was good. The place, if you haven't been to the Valley Relics Museum, it's really incredible. And worth a visit. It's seventy-nine-hundred Balboa, if anyone is interested in the future. Our folks represented us well at the annual meeting, and you know, confirmed or reinstalled on the Board of Directors of the Valley Economic Alliance. So we're well represented there by, you know, the various folks, you know, from Calabasas in the whole valley. Thanks.
Well, I'm offended that I wasn't invited if it was about Valley relics.
Well, you can be installed as a relic.
Okay.
But it was a board meeting and not a public meeting as such.
Okay, okay.
But, you know, we were all happy that it was in person, and that's the first for, you know, that was going to be now in quite a long time.
That was good. I liked that. All right. Do we have any other announcements? Okay, welcome back, Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you. I'm still having issues, but thank you.
But you're not echoing, so it's all good.
Good.
All right, on to oral communications and public comment. This is the portion of the meeting for citizens wishing to address the Commission on Matters Not on the Agenda. Do we have, who's monitoring? Do we have anyone in the audience?
Michael. Fine. I saw Michael's name.
I'm looking at attendees, and I see no hands raised.
Okay, then we will move on to consent items. We have approval of the minutes of October seventh. Do we have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, before the motion, staff had two corrections to the minutes for October seventh.
All right.
The first is on page two in the large paragraph, second to last sentence, to add the word reduce in between controls to abuse. So that that second to last sentence would read, "The Commission also discussed numerous controls to reduce abuse of the density bonuses that are permitted under the law."
Oh, that's a, that's a good correction.
And then second, at the very last sentence on that page two, the apostrophe in Commissioners is misplaced. We would recommend approval with those two changes.
And I have one.
May I add one more?
Yes, please.
In the large paragraph on page two, the last word CC and arts after it.
Oh, yeah. I forgot to mention that in my email map.
Okay. Anything, Commissioner Leah?
Yes, this is a technical question for our attorney. In the opening on both this minutes and the next one, it says that we're in the city council chambers. Is that okay, or should that be corrected?
We should add, I mean technically it's okay because we're meeting virtually, but I think it's okay because the meeting is virtual. And maybe we add call the meeting to order at sixteen in the chambers and virtually.
Okay, it also affects the next seven minutes.
Yeah, I think that would capture the, the present reality.
All right. Great. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of October seventh as, as corrected?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, the minutes of the meeting of October seventh are approved. Moving on to the minutes of October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, we have the correction to add and virtually in the first line. Let me add, any other, oh, somebody's rustling the lot. Do we have any, any corrections, any other corrections or additions to these minutes? Nope. Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Some will make motion, Dennis.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? If the minutes of the meeting of October twenty-first are approved. On to public hearing items. We have file number MSC two thousand twenty-one dash oh oh seven and SGNP dash two oh two one dash oh oh two. There are requests for a sign program and minor scenic corridor permit to accommodate additional signage at the Creekside Village Shopping Center located at two six five two seven Agoura Road within the commercial retail zoning district, scenic corridor overlay zone, and the Lost Virginus Gateway Master Plan area. The project is exempt from environmental review in accordance with section fifteen three eleven A, the California CEQA guidelines. Jaclyn, you're going to be presenting?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll go ahead and share my screen. Okay, good evening Commissioners. I'd like to start out by mentioning that this project was noticed to all property owners within five hundred feet of the subject site. The notice was also posted on the city's website, as well as throughout the city at all required locations, and no public correspondence was received. And again, this is a request for a sign program and minor scenic corridor permit to accommodate additional signage at the Creekside Village Shopping Center located at two six five two seven Agoura Road within the commercial retail zoning district, scenic corridor overlay zone, and Lost Virginus Gateway Master Plan area. And so here we have the location map. The project site is outlined in green. It's located in the commercial retail zoning district and scenic corridor overlay zone along Agoura Road. The site is surrounded by the one-on-one freeway to the north, office buildings to the west, and other commercial retail uses to the south and to the east. The subject site is composed of two parcels, and it is seven point zero seven acres in total. And the site is improved with an existing seventy-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-five square foot commercial shopping center. The proposal includes an updated sign program for the Creekside Shopping Center, as well as a request for a minor scenic corridor permit for signage that's within a designated scenic corridor. Calabasas Municipal Code Section seventeen point thirty point zero five zero C requires that a request for a sign program be approved by the Planning Commission. And I do want to mention that by that same section, the director has the authority to approve minor changes to an existing sign program if the intent of the original approval is not affected. However, a revision that substantially deviates from the original approval does require approval of a new sign program by the Planning Commission. So in this case, if the applicant is proposing additional signage beyond what was already allowed by the sign program, that is a substantial deviation. A little bit of background on the project. The center's current sign program was approved by the Planning Commission on August tenth, two thousand. Signage at the center currently includes building-mounted tenant identification signs for tenants on the first floor only, one freeway-facing tenant sign, pedestrian signs, and one monument sign. And the second-story tenants currently only have the pedestrian signs. They do not have any tenant identification signage that would be visible from the street or parking lot below. So on June second of two thousand twenty-one, the applicant submitted an application for a new sign program that incorporates tenant identification signage for the second-story tenants. The plans went through several revisions, and once all comments were addressed, the application was deemed complete by staff on December first of two thousand twenty-one. Here's some photos of the existing signage at the shopping center. The major tenant in this Creekside Village Shopping Center is Albertson's. So here's a photo of the existing major tenant sign for Albertson's. And then Albertson's also has a freeway-facing sign. It is the only sign at the shopping center that is freeway-facing. So here's a photo of that existing sign. And then the pad tenant is Starbucks. So they do have two secondary signs. These ones are the secondary tenant identification signs, and then they also have a primary sign around the other side of the building. And then here are additional pictures of the existing signage at the shopping center. So here you can see the primary tenant identification signs. These are all building-mounted for the minor tenants on the first story. As you can see in this picture, these kind of glass doors that you can see on the second story, these are the five second-story tenants. Those tenants currently do not have any signage that's visible from this view, from the parking lot from the street below. They only have the pedestrian signage. And then they have one monument sign that identifies the shopping center, Creekside Village, and it identifies the major tenant, which is Albertson's. We have a table that shows the proposed new signage for the shopping center. So what's being proposed is tenant identification signs for the second-story colonnade tenants. There are five tenants on the second story, so five signs are being proposed that are eleven square feet in area each. And the sign area is being measured from the sign frame that's being installed. So each frame will be eleven square feet, and then each tenant will have the ability to install their name, logo, their sign copy on that eleven-square-foot frame. So each of the frames will all be the same size. And the code allows for zero point five square feet of signage per linear foot of storefront with fifteen square feet being the smallest maximum and eighty square feet being the maximum. So the eleven square feet is within that range, and it complies with the code requirement. The maximum number of tenant identification signs allowed is one per tenant. The code requires, or the code allows one per tenant. They're proposing one per tenant, so that complies with the municipal code. The location of the proposed signage is hanging from an existing wood beam centered between two existing wooden pillars. The code requires that the sign to be centered on the wall or canopy over the existing storefront, so it does comply with the municipal code. The proposed sign copy is just tenant identification for each of the tenants, and the code requires that the sign copy be limited to tenant identification, so it complies with the municipal code. And lastly, the code does allow for illumination, so the proposed tenant identification signage is reverse channel letter illumination. Here we have some site plans. Can see here, the pad tenant signage, monument signage, major tenant signs, and minor tenant signs on the first story. All of this is existing. And then we have here, this view shows the second-story portion of the building that's over this minor tenant portion right here. And noted and read here, if you can see that, are each of those five signs for the second-story colonnade tenants. So going off of that formula I mentioned in the last slide, the point five square feet per linear foot of storefront. The colonnade tenants spans two hundred feet divided by five tenants, and each of them are allowed half of a square foot per linear foot of storefront. So the maximum square footage allowed per sign is twenty square feet. And again, each frame is proposed to be eleven square feet per the Architecture Review Panel's recommendations. The Architecture Review Panel, the ARP, reviewed the proposed sign program on July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, on September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, and on November nineteenth of two thousand twenty-one. With the comments from the first two ARP meetings incorporated, on November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the panel recommended approval of the sign program as proposed. So here we have, in this picture on the left here, the first version of the sign program that was reviewed by the Architecture Review Panel on July twenty-third of two thousand twenty-one. This was their first proposal. It was a twenty-square-foot sign with a white background, so with a white sign frame, and it was connected or mounted to the existing support posts in front of the corbels. And the ARP expressed a few concerns with this sign design and method of attachment. So in this meeting on July twenty-third and the subsequent meeting on September twenty-fourth, the ARP had commented that they preferred the sign frame to match the color of the existing wooden beams and wood corbels. They felt that the sign as proposed to be mounted to these beams did not match the architectural style of the existing shopping center because it covered the existing corbels. So you weren't able to see those features that the existing shopping center had. And they also expressed concern with the sign's size and the method of attachment, that it, whether or not the method of attachment would be structurally feasible. So in this image on the right, we have the revised proposal, which was reviewed and recommended approval by the ARP on November nineteenth. As you can see in this design on the right, the background of the sign frame has been changed to a brown color, which will match the same color of the wooden beams and the wood frame above. The size of the sign has been reduced from twenty square feet to eleven square feet. The method of attachment is now hanging from that wooden beam, and we do have a structural analysis stamped by an engineer showing that this method of attachment would be structurally feasible. And the type of illumination proposed would be a reverse channel letter illumination. So the face of each letter would be an aluminum that can be painted, and then when lit at night, there would be a halo effect behind the letters with the lighting projecting onto the sign frame behind it. And again, since there are five of these second-story tenants, there would be five of these hanging signs, all with the same size sign frame, and each of the tenants would mount their letters onto this sign frame. The findings, the findings required in section seventeen point thirty point zero five zero for a sign program and section seventeen point six two point zero five zero for a minor scenic corridor permit of the Calabasas Municipal Code have been made and are contained in Planning Commission Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash seven three six. That, staff includes that the proposed sign program for an existing commercial shopping center is an allowed use in the commercial retail zoning district, that the proposed sign program meets all applicable standards of the Calabasas Municipal Code and scenic corridor design guidelines, that the proposed sign program is compatible in design, appearance, and scale with existing uses and development of the surrounding area, and the Architecture Review Panel recommended approval of the proposed project. The project is also exempt from CEQA review, and the proposed project meets all required findings for a sign program and a minor scenic corridor permit. With that, staff recommends that the Commission adopt Resolution number two thousand twenty-one dash seven three six, approving file number SGNP dash two thousand twenty-one dash zero zero two and MSCP dash two thousand twenty-one dash zero zero seven. Thank you, and I am available for questions.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Before I open the public hearing, are there any questions from the Commission of Staff? Commissioner Harrison?
Yes, thank you. Do you know who the tenants are, Jaclyn?
I believe at the Architecture Review Panel meeting, I think the applicant had mentioned that most of the tenants that are there right now are office tenants. I'm not sure of the exact names, and I'm not sure if all of the spaces are occupied. But per our code, there is no difference in zoning from the first-story tenants or the second-story tenants. So even though there may not be retail tenants on the second story currently, it could presumably be retail tenants there in the future. It's essentially up to the landlord if they would choose to allow that.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Commissioner Mueller?
Yes, Jaclyn, thank you for your presentation. I think you said that the material of the actual lettering of the proposed signs is aluminum. Did I get that right?
Yes, so the, I believe, if I can double-check in the sign program, but I believe the face would be aluminum or a metal that could be painted, and that the backing would be a clear Lexan backing, so that the illumination would shine through the backs of the sign or the sign lettering.
And so my question is, I think you just maybe answered it. You said that aluminum can be painted. So the, so the colors, I guess, two questions. The actual lettering on each of the signs will be the same, or can they be, can the lettering actually be different?
Um, I think our city attorney may be able to weigh in on this, but I believe that there are certain things about a sign that we can't regulate. So if they have a nationally-recognized brand, we wouldn't be able to control the color or the font.
I would even go so far as to say not just nationally-recognized brands, any, we, we can control the general look, and to a certain extent, we can control color, font. I don't think we have any control over. So we have to be somewhat reasonable balancing our ability to regulate against the First Amendment.
All right, so I just want to be clear. These, these signs, while they're going to be the same size, the actual sign will potentially have different lettering and different colors.
Correct, yeah.
Just sort of like this, sort of like the signs on the first floor. You can see they're all different colors and different styles.
Correct, yeah. The sign frames will be identical, but a different font, letter, size of sign copy will be mounted onto those frames.
Um, did you want to say something?
Correct.
I wanted to say something just that I don't think came through in the presentation, which is it's not merely an eleven-square-foot limitation on size. It's specific in the program that the signs would be two feet tall and five and a half feet across, so there would be uniformity in terms of the signs that you would see. They would not be various shapes and that sort of thing, even though they would all be eleven square feet. I just want to make that clear.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, any other questions? All right, then I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we, but, excuse me, do we have a representative from the applicant? Do we have the applicant here?
We should. He just doesn't have his hand up at the moment.
All right, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand. There we go. Is this Chris Kim?
Yes, hi.
Hi, welcome. Can you please state your name and city of residence?
Chris Kim, and I'm currently in Los Angeles.
Okay, terrific. Um, did you, did you want to make a presentation, or are you here to answer questions?
Jaclyn did a phenomenal job on presenting my sign program, so I don't, I don't think there's anything else to add.
Okay, then I'll ask if any of the Commissioners have any questions of Mr. Kim. Any questions? Hey, I, I will ask you, Mr. Kim, have you read the, have you read the resolution and the proposed resolution and the conditions attached to it?
Yes.
And are you prepared to comply with those conditions if the resolution has passed? Thank you. All right, then, anyone else, anybody else with their hand raised? Right, then I will close the public hearing. Do we have any discussion or a motion? Commissioner Washburn?
I would only express my surprise that this hasn't occurred earlier. I was always curious about the upstairs at the Albertson Center or the Creekside Center, and I think that this is a good proposal, and I would make a motion to approve the resolution.
All right, do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, thank you. Actually, I was on the Planning Commission when this was first approved, the first sign program, but I'm not sure there's any, there are any tenants who even want this. They're, they're all office tenants upstairs. So it just doesn't seem like this makes much sense. It's like a proliferation of signs to me. It reminds me a little bit of the courtyard at the Commons where we're getting all these new monument signs with lists of tenants that no one can see when they're driving by. I don't think people in the parking lot are going to be able to see these signs. The lettering is half the size of the signs downstairs. And it's, to me, it's like a clutter of signs. It's visual pollution to me. I don't think they're good for visitors. I think it's just fees to the landlord. I think it detracts from the retail customers downstairs. I don't think they meet the code standards requiring minimum lighting because none of these tenants are there in the evening, so why does it need to be illuminated? I, I don't think finding number one on page three is true about the minimum illumination. I think it's also a waste of energy to light signs for tenants who are not there. And just, you know, creating, you know, just wasting energy and creating greenhouse gases, and we're supposed to be moving in that direction to eliminate that. So I just don't, I just don't understand the whole point of this. I mean, I, I know Dennis just said that he was wondering why there weren't signs, but they're, they're, they're office tenants. You know, an investment company, a carpet cleaners, they, they don't need their signs illuminated at night. It's just an expense to them, and it's just a revenue stream, I think, to the landlord and just, and visual pollution of the community. So I don't understand it really. And by the way, the Architecture Review Panel did approve the design. They didn't, they, they don't know about the, they don't, I mean, I, I was on that committee. You don't, you don't look at the, the laws regarding you know, the, the code, the code findings regarding minimum illumination and things like that, or scenic corridor. They don't look at that. They did do a good job on fixing the design, making it look better for the center, but again, I just don't think these are necessary, and it's just, it's just pollution, visual pollution for the scenic corridor. So anyway, that's it.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor of adopting this resolution two oh two one dash seven three six, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
The resolution is passed, four to one. Thank you, and Jaclyn, thank you for an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
All right, let's go on to item number three on the agenda, and this is a discussion of Calabasas ridge lines, a fourth overview of other agency practices. Maureen, are you going to be providing us the, our, all that good information? Okay, thank you.
Yes, so I can't, I'll share my screen. Start this from, okay. Here we go. So this is your fourth report. Um, the first report we did was to take a look at how this, it's looked at ridge lines over time, how it developed, how the definition changed at one point, and how they originally mapped, which is on a topo map from a time long before uh, the mountains were bulldozed and remodeled for the current development that sits on them. Our second meeting was taking an in-depth look at what is the location of those ridge lines, what's sitting on them right now, and view line exercises of the reality that actually look up from the scenic corridor and look at the silhouette for ridge line. You don't actually see the ridge line. It's even further off from the top of the mountain, so unusual findings that way. Meeting three was starting to take a look at ridge line practices in other communities, and from that, there were questions raised by the Commission with regard to other agency practices. So this is this discussion. So this is this discussion. Um, it's meeting number four, and let's get started. So you had a couple of requests. You wanted us to look at local cities, Westlake Village and City of Gore Hills. Uh, Oak Park was also another one, but we'd actually covered that in a Thousand Oaks presentation and what because Oak Park is part of that broader county area. Um, so we dropped it from any further review at this time. But we did bring in Fairfax. We did look typically at Northern California cities within that Western County region. Fairfax is a good example of best practices. Um, remember that as we look, we keep four things in mind, so we're constantly comparing the same thing. Number one, how do you define a ridge line? What it's a? Number two, how does the city map ridge lines? What is the mapping style that they apply? Number three are tools, code, tools that are used in order to control development. And fourth is Ulines. Um, how do ridge lines, how are they viewed from what locations within the city? Um, you had three other requests. Um, one was to take a look at what expanded scenic corridor areas might be made available within the city. The second one was a overview of private view protection. And we're going to give you that with a little bit of focus on the City of Malibu because that's local. And also developed ridge line best practices. Interestingly enough, we were really unable to find cities that had specific guidelines for developed ridge lines. What do you do with the house on the ridge line with an addiction? LA County was the only um, uh, agency that we found that even discussed expanding uh, current developments on ridge lines. That 1,000 square foot maximum expansion is what we have adopted within our code. Um, but there are no specific code sections that we could find that pertain only to developed properties on ridge lines. One of the other things to really think about too is the majority of our ridge lines are, are, have gated communities. And within those gated communities, you have a very homogenous style of architecture there. And so all of those colors, all of those design features are part of the CNRs of that community. So bringing into discussion, um, things like painting different colors to an HOA community is a very difficult type of approach because your community is going to start to look very disjointed. Um, and it's going to interrupt the CNRs, the established design of those communities. So uh, we're gonna drop that in any further detail at this point unless you'd like us to think of things in the future of what potentially we might add. But what we found was that most codes assume that this is an undeveloped ridge line and control the initial development on the site, not after it occurs. So let's start with Westlake Village. Um, their general plan actually identifies prominent ridge lines. And they say that they have to form a part of this guideline that's visible from any city arterial. So it's a very broad look um, around the city. The general plan has the ridge lines as we do in the hillside management area of their code. That's the way we approach it as well. And interestingly enough, they're also classified as open space. So as such, these ridge line components are mapped and protected within the hillside management program. They use a broken line, not a continuous line, so you're looking just at feature components as protected. Here is their map. You can see these orange areas or white yellow areas are the open space components with the ridge line moving prominently through those areas. But you also see components of ridge lines that occur on private property that are still potentially subject to development in that area. But uh, this is the management program relative to protecting the scenic beauty of these particular components. Um, they have a chapter entitled Hillside Development Standards. Its purpose is to preserve and maintain the natural character and visual amenities of hillsides as a scenic resource to the city. Again, we have seen this over and over again. Natural character is protected. They're not protecting a developed ridge line. Um, their protection tools are very standard we see in uh, many other cities to minimize grading and to integrate natural landscaping to minimize any view impact. The view lines are along any arterial street that's mapped in their general plans. That's the way you look at these. So this is the one-on-one freeway corridor. And then these are all the arterials. They do not distinguish between a primary and a secondary arterial. Um, in this particular map, so they have a fairly expanded um, uh, view corridor area. Moving next to this.
A quick question. Uh, could you, could, uh, on that map that you have there, could you put your cursor on where the, the actual Westlake Lake is?
I.
In the center, it's in the center, upper part.
There it is. Row, row, row your boat. There we go. So we'll move on to the City of Gore Hills, our neighbor. We actually share some of the views. Um, interestingly enough, they actually don't have a formal definition of what a ridge line is. Um, although they do identify six significant ridge lines within the city. And they identify, and I like this, secondary ridge lines were identified as topographic features which are developed or improved, meaning maybe graded. Um, or where views are partially blocked. So um, now that view corridor, it's an interesting one because you could be blocked in some spots, but not other spots. But I did like the uh, notion that a secondary ridge line is a developed ridge lines. Um, they as well use the broken line technique. So uh, when the bridge line dips, it's not a continuous uh, progression. Um, another thing that we have seen often is when ridge lines are part of a broader look at uh, a feature. In this case, it's open space resources. So uh, they've mapped all of these open space components and it's a very broad definition of open space. So here is the White Corridor as it moves through the city. That's one of the mapped areas. Another active area is open space, which is um, both HOA protected open space, open space that it's owned by public agencies. Um, hillside components, we have specific planned open space. They have a large variety of areas. They also include sports fields, parks as well. So anything that's a large undeveloped area, definable, protected went into this open space resource maps. The brown lines are the six primary ridge lines. And these kind of mustardy yellow are your secondary developed ridge line or partially blocked visual features. So interesting mapping style. Here's a little bit of a close-up. You see that features that these mountain tops are the prominent ones that are seen. Um, also note that they have a ridge line features that occur outside of their city boundaries. Um, we do it as well. Um, so um, the question, it's their interesting question as to whether or not uh, view protections uh, occur from within the city, without the city and whether or not the ridge line itself is in the city or out of the city. We see every variation on that theme in all um, our components of how you map things as you move forward with your mapping. Um, from the code standpoint, ridge line protections are really part of a hillside and significant ecological area management. Um, so some of the tools that they have is of course grading and land feature alterations. But um, if you looked at the attachment, they have a um, I would say a rather technical and complex sliding scale of required open space area to development based on site grade. So it's quite a calculation. There are pages, pages of it. But the general concept is, is the higher the grade, the smaller the development. Um, the flatter the grade, um, the more development area is supported on the site in general. In general, so there are features as well. Um, they look at the integration as well of natural landscaping. Now, one of the things that we all know is that natural landscaping is a component that's really um, not necessarily controlled by the city so much, but by some of the buffer areas that are established, brush clearance areas and um, um, tree and plant material that's established uh, for fire resistance through the fire department. So um, this is another factor out of our hands. We also know that starting in um, 2022, January 2022, bills have, will go into effect that look at much larger areas of protections around property. So uh, the use of this natural landscaping feature um, to screen a property um, may not be as easily used in the future. So things like berms, other features um, may be more of a desired approach to protecting views than uh, kind of shielding a building with trees, for example. Um, from uh, interestingly, uh, their general plan doesn't have a map of the scenic corridors. But it does, it's it just describes them. So there are basically streets that run north, south, east, west. Um, and those are the designated scenic corridors within the city. What's also interesting is that there is a freeway corridor overlay zone. And that's, it's near a 660 feet from the freeway right away edge. So from that corridor which runs through their city, um, they have view protections for that 660 feet. Um, but also distant status of the significant ridge lines as well. So again, those unmapped roadways are the components of how you would take a look at a ridge line and development that would potentially be impacted. So moving on to Fairfax, California, I'm gonna pause on this picture because I, I, this picture struck me. Um, when you first look at it, you really don't quite see the large number of homes that are sitting up in these hillside areas. And the reason why is the primary shielding feature of what they do in Fairfax, California and all of Northern California is you get buried in a woodland. That's effectively the way that they screen houses um, and structures from any view impacts. Um, so uh, this again is a practice that Fire Safe has started to take root and to change over time. Um, there are not a lot of remaining parcels in the hillside areas. Understand from speaking to the planners there, but there are still a few. Um, and one, and if they develop, because of course the last and hardest sites, um, the screening opportunity will be lost. Um, their code states that the purpose of um, their controls is to conserve those scenic resources and the sense of a local community afforded by the presence of unorganized open space on the ridge lines above town. So this kind of cocoon of plant material houses is considered to be a kind of a blanket around the town center. Um, as we were told, uh, there is a definition within the code. The ridge line is the uppermost line elevation traversing a major ridge. It's a chain of hills. Um, they are included in a scenic corridor map. We'll go into that map in detail because um, it's another map that really impressed me because it all focuses in on what's an important visual treasure within our city. So briefly, the ridge lines, of course, the scenic corridors, even driving down a corridor that sets up that umbrella of trees, that is a scenic resources. Um, town areas, the little main street downtown, that view is protected. And what, they want that to remain as well. Conifer forests, they have some dense forest areas, creeks, obviously vista points and gateways. Now, the gateways for them are very important. So here's their map. Um, and I'm going to go into it in a little detail. But you have a, a ridge line component in red. So the ridge lines are here and surrounded on either side by scenic areas that are protected. You have visually significant areas, which are these uh, pinkish blocks. You have scenic highways moving through town. So just a pretty roadway is considered a protected uh, feature of the city. They have these conifer forests that pop up in certain areas. There are stream corridors. Many of these are in private property, but to the extent that some traverse. There are stream corridors. Many of these are in private property, but to the extent that some traverse. The scenic areas, they are protected. The map also identifies important view lines through the use of little arrows. And gateways, place where you enter and leave the city. What is the first view that you have from that location? So here's a close up. Excuse me. So you can see the little. Red line, they have a continuous line of this chain of hills. The scenic corridor on either side of that, that's the protected area. That would be uh similar to our fifty feet, over fifty feet on either side of. Um, here is the blue, the blue feature is the creek. This is a visually prominent area. Those little mountains that overlook and shelter the town. Those are those protected visual areas of the city. Here is what they describe as a gateway. You can see it looks like a little bridge. Of how you enter the city. The scenic corridor, it's a little while so long. And then um, the view lines that come from that, the view vistas, the specific ones that she will enter actually. And exit are pointed. Um, in there. So it's a very comprehensive map. Different than the open space resources that we just saw out in um. Well. A city of hills, Fairfax. Uses these visual, all of their visual resources and they add. Um, rich lines to those. Uh, there's so many map variations out there we've seen now. Um, biotic resources, now visual resources, open space resources. And combinations of everything in between. What are their tools? They have prohibitions on buildings, modifications or accessory structures. Within those mapped visual corridors unless you can't see them. Period. You gotta hide within that area. Maybe you may do a burn, a buffer, um, maybe you do uh trees. Um, maybe you um. Use color or other components. But you can't see it. If you see it, you can't have it. Uh, they have extensive use of that landscaping. Again, that's gonna probably go away. Uh, we've seen this one before underground utilities. That's. Um, one of ours too, roads over ridge lines, another one of ours. Low level exterior lighting is specifically called for in these zones. Um, and an interesting one screening up large unnatural surfaces. So that could be like a big um. Uh, driveway, concrete area, big patio. That's an unnatural surface. And they don't want that. They don't want this big flat thing uh sticking up on this pretty green hillside. So. This is highly unusual. I didn't see this anywhere else. But um, view lines are established on a case by case basis. At the time of application review, the project is brought forward to the planning commission. Who determines where the few lines are gonna be. So it could be anywhere. It could be um, from a public gathering area. From neighboring properties, from scenic corridors, from points within the subject property. Um, so um. It each case is individual and there's no fixed spot. Fixed spot is determined at the time the application comes forward. And the planning commission gets to make that call. So the other request that you had was um. Hey, what if we did expand the scenic corridor areas? What would that look like? You also had a question about private view protection and Matt Summers and Tom um. Both of you will be hopefully pitching in perspectives on it. So I'm gonna give you a. Kind of overview, but feel free to um, stop to make any points in this presentation on this. Um, Brenda uh Gonya, who has left the city. Um, didn't work in Malibu and um. Uh, her, her uh. Her word, I think when I asked her how a buzz to work with this code was something like, uh. Very tough. Um, so um, I'm sorry she's not here to give you her personal experiences in working on that. Um, and again, as we said, the developed ridge line best practices. Uh, we might have to just make those up internally for our city. Um, couldn't find anything I really was an independent look at that area. So here is the city's map. Of our primary. Arterial streets, they're the one in purple. And then we have what we call collector routes. In uh, city thousand Oaks, those would be secondary artillery, are arterials. Um, and then you have just your local streets, which would be embedded in neighborhoods. So. The least amount of traffic to green, moderate traffic to um, the actual arterials. Most of those arterials with few exceptions are our current scenic corridors. So what would happen if you just added in those additional arterials? There they are. You would be adding in. An our side of your road, which actually runs through county area, the majority of that. Uh, he would be adding in. Calabasas Road and the park would on a loop down in this area. Over on the west side, you'd be adding in Agora Road. And Lost Hills Road. Those would be the components that you would automatically be adding in. If you take a look at the collector votes. Um, remembering that some of many of these are actually gated communities. Um, and we have no access to them. At least as private residents, um, you would. But as a individual living in a non-gated community. Uh, you wouldn't be able to access them. So I was, uh, I did not seek to add those in. Um, at this point, but they certainly could be considered. But what I did like was a Fairfax concept of looking at the gateways. So one of the things I started to do is say. How can people go in and out and where are these occurring? And I was surprised to find how many different points the city has of entry. And I was also surprised at how magnificent the views from these points were. So not just driving on a street, but how does it feel to enter our community? Um, here is the entry to Calabasas through Old Town. If this was the town of Fairfax, this would be a protected view. This view what the little town. How it exists um, would be protected for signage, for treats, for features. Um, for height, for bulk. Um. And mapped. So that's a gateway opportunity. Here's another gateway opportunity. Um. Commissioners Harrison and Washburn, perhaps Commissioner. Leah and Mueller. Um, I don't know, but if you recall, when I first came to this in two thousand and four. There was an effort by some residents to beautify this bridge. And this entry point to the city and to actually uh, dull it up a bit. Um, but you can see the prominence of the hillside and ridge line views in this area. Um, just as a simple entry point. And a huge one as well. Uh, I don't know what the volume is of traffic. We could figure it out and try to figure out how many people. Enjoy this view of our community every day. Top of Moll Hallen. As you crest over the hill and come into the community. Um, in front of you is um. A a a great number of little homes um. Up in highlands, it's almost difficult to see until you get a bit closer. But but this would be a gateway view that could be better um. Uh. Articulated as a protected view within a mapping style if you wanted to. Here's another view opportunity, very prominent hillside. Um, and ridge line is coming down um, Calabasas Road right before you hit. The um. Um, Lost Hill Sheriff Department and you're just on the borders of our city. So many gateway viewpoint opportunities. As you look at protecting those views, you can see that even this building here, imagine. Uh, twenty years from now, that building developed in some fashion. And uh, signs came out more prominently in front. This would be a potentially a scenic corridor and a protected view uh, for the community. So now let's move on to private view protections. Um, these are codes established all around the country. Um, here in California. And they have uh, two primary uh, categories of the protection. First is the classic one, which is to protect views of a feature. Um, it could be a step. It could be a mountain top. It could be water body. Um, it could be a uh. A bridge. It's some feature. That is prominent within the community. If you think of past, you know, a feature there might be the old Colorado Street Bridge. And enjoy it in that uh, by hillside residents. The other category. Um, is any private view, doesn't have to be a feature. Which is impacted by and lost to landscaping. That's a huge category that's covered in many of these private view protections. So um, it could be the view out your uh, kitchen window. Of nice hillside until your neighbor plants a. A large pepper tree and he loses that view that you've enjoyed for years. So how does this get done? The protections always contain some method. In which you can either avoid a blockage of an established view. Fully or partially. But you've got to be able to document what that view is or was. Through a articulated method. And register that view so that in the future, if somebody blocks it. That property owner can take action against the neighbor to restore that view line. It does not mean that you cannot build anything in that location. And you might want to offer some thoughts on this particular area of view protection.
Yes, so a couple of additional points to bear in mind and the packet includes a copy of the Malibu ordinance on this. Chapter seventeen forty five of Malibu's code. And private view shed protection ordinances. Um, as noted, come in two flavors. One protects. Views of some significant feature commonly. If, for example, Malibu, most of the time the view is of the ocean. Which is in one direction and thus a clear directional view shed. Um, sometime, some of the other coastal cities have something similar. Other times, though, you've got a broader protection. And I will say Malibu's protection is both of. Quote, primary views of the ocean, but also primary views of mountains and of hillsides. It's a. Uh, broader than purely. Um. Broader than just the ocean. The quote is. Quote visually impressive scenes of the Pacific Ocean offshore islands, Santa Monica Mountains, canyons, valleys, ravines. Um, implementation of an ordinance of this type is quite complex. And creates a number of uh, neighbor to neighbor conflict points. The Malibu's created a series of uh, programs, rules and regulations to manage that set of conflicts. And to create a process by which the city can resolve a portion of them, and ultimately a court can resolve some others. Uh, if the city can't resolve them at that city level. One other point to bear in mind is the Malibu approach, and this is sort of borne out by other private view protection ordinances. They they pick a date, usually the date of adoption of the ordinance. And that is protects views that exist as of that date. Um, not necessarily restoration of views that never existed. But if a view is later lost, then it can be restored. Um, and the Malibu ordinance protects only, only obstructions caused by foliage. In other words, if a tree grows too tall, neighbor A can force neighbor B to cut the tree. In order to protect neighbor A's view over what used to be the top of the tree. Uh, of the ocean or the other protected view shed components. Uh, but that obviously, you know, there's a balance component to it because. The policymakers, the commission on recommendation and the council making the policy. Will also want to consider view shed, but also environmental goals that are perhaps accomplished by. Um, additional tree coverage and tree foliage. The other component to recognize is that. Cities can adopt an ordinance that goes beyond what Malibu has done. And protect both the view shed against foliage intrusion and foliage blocking, but also against development and provide that. Uh, much like we have for scenic bridge lines. Also create processes that define a protected view and then establish standards limiting development. That would impact that view. Doing so again creates a significant implementation challenge. Because you have to define clearly in a way that all sides can see upfront, what is the protected view. And then what level of intrusion into that is allowed. And to create a number of escape valves to avoid. A variety of lawsuits, including a taking's escape valve. If the application of the ordinance would would affect a taking of the property, this sought to be developed. And then include some sort of a process by which the staff and then the planning commission can. Resume and consider exceptions, sort of a variance process. So it can work, um, but it does, it does um. Bring with it a number of implementation challenges and is something that should be considered from a balanced perspective. And I staff, myself and staff, we happen to answer any questions. On um, private view, private view protection ordinances. Thank you.
I see Dennis has his hands up.
Yeah, uh, Marine, back when in the, oh, I guess the later nineties, ninety six to ninety eight, ninety nine. We established a mediation panel, very much like we have our architectural review panel. Um, in order to deal with issues like this where we, I think, understood that. Most disputes are gonna be between or amongst um, private property owners. But at the time, we had a number of mediators in the community that were willing to at least. Be host to the discussion of how they might settle their own issues. Without having to try to create a code or a definition of, you know, what is a, a protectable. Uh, view and or. uh view and or, you know, what do you do with foliage or um land movements and any number of other circumstances that can actually change um a person's enjoyment of their property over time, or if a tree falls over and, you know, who's responsible for taking care of the, either the repair or the view shed and yeah uh view, a private view uh uh benefits that folks believe that they're entitled to. So um that's an, that's another mechanism that has been tried here that could actually work. We have a lot of talented mediators in our community that might be able to help at least offer the service of dealing with um the complexities of trying to deal with private views.
Yes.
Agreed. And I think that's part of it is a private view shed ordinance often becomes a tool by which pre-existing conflicts get in transmuted into a conflict over the height of a tree uh when the real resolution is something else.
Um I'm not too sure how my screen has gone to the background. Does anyone see my screen anymore?
No, we lost the slides.
I don't know if somebody from um IT can help us reestablish that.
Maureen, you can just reshare your screen.
Re-share, okay. Here we go.
I did it.
Right, um. So as discussed, these disputes, uh neighbor-to-neighbor disputes on views. Uh certainly, we know from Malibu, they're very time-consuming for the city, for staff. Um efforts are intensive just to get a database established. Um and let's look at how many homes potentially could line up. In the worst case scenario, almost seven thousand properties. And um we'll we'll give you a little flavor of Malibu's code. How it has to be developed in order to address that. Um we talked about that very broad primary view. But but the definitions of what that means, what's the view? It has measurement. It has measurement at a point within ten feet of the nearest outside wall of the structure. It is precise as to where that location is, how it is to be established. And it has additional information about what is primary within a home. What what uh point at which a view can be protected? So interesting piece here. Um so how would an owner do this? Um first of all, you pay to have your view documented. And you can produce uh certainly uh evidence of what that view used to look like. Um and there's a site visit that's required by the planner. Um there's fees that have to be put in place. Current fee is three hundred and fifty-one dollars just to have somebody go out there and document the database of the view. Then for a permit, and what a permit does is effectively permit a property owner at their cost who um having worked with their neighbor cut the tree, the fence that hedge, not the fence, but the hedge um or whatever um offending of foliage and landscaping has grown up to block that view. Um when it goes to the planning commission, um it is a higher level of dispute between two individuals that has not been able to be resolved between them. And so the planning commission is the arbiter of whether or not the view should be issued a permit or a property owner should be issued a permit to actually resolve the view. So it puts planning commissioners and planning directors in the heart of a sometimes difficult battle between two property owners. Um the that uh kind of concludes the new protection. Matt, anything to add to this at all?
That's fine. Did you have another slide after this one, Maureen?
I do. I was just going to provide a brief summary of where we are. So of these four overview presentations and bundles of thick material, um all of this is posted on the city's project page, as will this presentation be posted after tonight. Um we've seen many different definitions of a ridge line. Where water shed, the point where water goes down um one side or another. Some define a ridge line as part of a larger hillside, the top of a view from valley to the top. Visual feature such as the prominence of the hill. A disturbed or undisturbed primary or secondary ridge line. Some of those technical issues are in definitions. Um many have broken line, height above sea level definitions. And again, a line at sight. Uh here's the way you look at this thing. It's a mountain with different components. Um mapping style, you see, why if I get those for the ridge line itself, broken or straight uh integrated into hillside zones, zone area of archer measured or map distance from a high point. Um and then integration of that ridge line into other key mapping parks, open space, visual feature, view locations, open space corridors, that Fairfax example we saw tonight. Visual uh the Agoura Hills example, open space. So uh that mapping style is a wide gamut. Ours simply lines. Not integrated as was originally within a scenic uh component of our first general plan. Um the tools that we saw, the code tools certainly overlay something seems to be prominent as a feature that that the ridge line isn't just a line, a part of a larger zoning uh map. Limits on height, size, lot size, so that element is less visible. Um specific guidelines to ridge line hillside development, many of which we have, but there's a few new ones out there. Um a lot of codes that took a look at pre-application efforts. Um site constraint analysis, meetings, neighbor consultations as mandatory, view line simulations um and other features of uh application materials that uh were embodied in those codes. And expansion of protection areas surrounding ridge lines. Um we have a fifty-foot wide, fifty-foot down uh protection area. So we've seen many uh agencies go well beyond that. Um from view lines, um we have the scenic corridor view only. However, many cities span well be on that. Some establish specific locations on a map for a view evaluation. Um some use flexibility as a view percentage, so it wasn't just fifty-foot, no silhouette, but it was can we, can we get third the parcel and then another third underneath so that uh you um evaluate the visual impact. Um and not necessarily a fixed numeric standard in order to state. As long as you meet the standard, you're fine, when in fact that may not be best location to place the development project. Um and certainly a number of uh codes expanded the use of digital imagery and drawings uh when trying to get a visual representation of um uh ridge line development. So that will conclude the pieces for tonight. So any feedback will be uh wonderful for us. And then the next step on this is to kind of take a look at the summary areas to go back and to really say, what do you think we should do um in each of these different areas? Um what's your preliminary recommendation to the council? Um right now, this is a unbudgeted um uh effort. Um uh we did take, I think we uh meeting number two, we had a preliminary uh valuation from a consultant that just to remap the ridge lines alone would be a ten to fifteen thousand dollar effort. Um and that's just a single line map. So if you take a look into zoning maps rewriting code, rewriting standards, you could be looking well into the hundreds of thousands of dollars um for that exercise. That shouldn't be a deterrent to moving forward, but it will be something that um the council will need to understand as part of the recommendation process of preliminary sense what that might be. We've also uh talked about holding a workshop. Um it could be that uh once you get uh a general consensus from the council moving in a specific that that would be a recommendation around which uh you you incorporate your public workshop process. It could be that you make a determination that prior to bringing a recommendation for it that you use public workshops uh to get input to inform the council. So it's a component that will occur in your um and with that, uh that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Maureen. Um are are we taking questions?
Sure.
Are there any questions at this point? Any comments? Commissioner Harrison?
I guess my only question is of you, Commissioner Vassberg. Are you going to be the mediator for all those private view disputes?
I I will, I will, I will reserve comment for a later meeting regarding private view sheds.
All right. Uh I I do think, I do think we could could use some workshops from the, from the citizens to see which way they want to go. I could express my thoughts, but I I think the community needs to get involved. I I do like the view lines uh that we saw in Westlake Village, which is more like Maraga and Los Gatos. Uh they're broader than what we have. Um I don't like the view lines in Fairfax because that's just so subjective. It depends on what the planning commission decides. I I think that's that that puts too much burden on the planning commission. I like the secondary ridge lines that Agura has um in in their definitions. I think the tools that Fairfax has, those are good, uh and their mapping sales broad. Um I do like what Maureen put up as far as those those points of interest. Uh and I would, uh I mean, I think that's very important. I would add some of those. I forgot what you call those smaller streets. Uh like Parkway Calabasas and Park Sienna and Park Helena and Lost Hills uh and maybe others, you know, where the public can travel. I think some of those have significant views. Um I do think the private view issue that Malibu has that that Maureen was talking about, and we and we have a copy of that here, that's just so expensive. And unless unless Wendy wants to undertake all of that, I I just, I just think that would be extremely difficult. I'll give you an example. And and where I live, uh we used to have a view uh going east uh in the in the valley. We could see the mountains on the east end of the San Fernando Valley uh when when we moved in, but um the trees on the golf course have grown and those views are blocked, at least from my, from my house right now. I just can't imagine uh, you know, going, you know, having some dispute with the golf course and spending all that time and money trying to uh establish a a previous view. Um anyway, those are just my thoughts, but I do think workshops would be helpful. Thank you. And thank you for that presentation, Maureen. I don't know if this is your last presentation or not, but that's just very impressive.
Thank you. I I think I've I've officially taken you as far as I can go, and so the baton will be handed off, so.
Thank you.
I I don't know. Can I officially object? How is she given the ability to hand this baton to me at this point?
Commissioner Washburn.
Yeah, I was just going to add that uh we have an inside track in Fairfax. Our first city manager um was recruited uh from his position in um Fairfax as the town administrator, where uh a town administrator is actually um in in service to the city council. Um city council has a lot more uh influence on how things are done. Um and if you see the complexity of the environment that's in Fairfax, it might be good to get some um idea of how they have handled this over time because uh we hired Chuck Cate in nineteen ninety-one or ninety, yeah, late ninety-one. And, you know, he was with us for ten years and he went back actually to be town administrator in Fairfax. So it might be interesting to see what kind of um uh I guess uh influences we can um glean from his points of view there. And I bet you we'd be able to get him to uh to come down and work with us on a workshop uh as you're suggesting, Michael, it would be good, you know, where you can track a community over a long period of time where they really care about their views and their ridge lines and their watersheds, because uh that's one of the things we haven't talked about very much, and that is the watershed orientation of um this community of Calabasas. You know, we've done a really good job, I think, in understanding the uh the watershed and its effects on the expectations of our uh residents of of what we do to protect our streams, our valleys and our hills, which then create the streams and the valleys, et cetera. Um on this side of town, that's the east side of town, we haven't done an awful lot yet with the Arroyo Calabasas watershed, where the water from your community, Michael, and mine, you know, flow into the street, the stream that goes to Canoga Park High School. And then the LA city thinks that's where the um LA River actually springs magically from the ground and goes to Long Beach. So there's a number of issues that I think we're going to need to study um as as we develop this, and it's it's going to be a procedure and a philosophy, interestingly enough, I think. But thank you for your comments, Michael. And uh Maureen, thank you for the presentation.
Hey, I, any Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I just briefly, uh I mean, I guess I should start by mentioning that I live on a ridge line, or at least used to be a ridge line. So when I wave my arms about protecting ridge lines, I I I'm mindful of the fact that I benefit from the development on one. But I have to say that the the ridge line protection issue in general is one that's close to my heart. Um and I would like, I agree a lot of what Commissioner Harrison said in terms of basically expanding our definitions and and what is a ridge line for better protection overall. I'm I think one of the great things about the valley in general is the uh or or the ridge line views as you travel along. I think one of the great things about the valley in general is the uh, or, or the ridge line views as you travel along the. The one oh one, I frequently point out to visitors, how, how many big cities? Uh, can you point out that you drive along and can see? Eight to nine thousand foot mountains in the distance in. Uh, the San Gabriel's and the, and the twenty-five hundred. Foot mountains in the Santa Monica range. I mean, we're so blessed. And if we don't do something, um, I think fairly aggressively to freeze. What we have and protect what we have and perhaps expand our protections more. Uh, over time, it's, uh, they're gonna go away, you know, one. Example of that is, I guess this is in maybe Reseda or Encino, maybe Encino, the new develop, the new uh hospital development, I think it's Providence.
What a nightmare.
I mean, it's, it's, I, I think the architecture is fine, but it just wiped out. Fifteen to twenty seconds of view that you used to have of the Santa Monicas. And uh, that kind of thing can obviously happen. I mean, we need hospitals and that seems to be a fine hospital, but my God, that really. Uh, strikes me as, as what bad things can happen. If we don't get uh involved in protecting this stuff in a broad range. Now, the other comment I wanted to make is that on the view shed, I've always been generally in favor of having a, a view shed ordinance. Um. I've just seen too many examples here, like in Michael Harrison's case where. You know, through no. Devious plot. Uh, you, you have a situation where very valuable and interesting views that you had are gone. Um, I looked, I was noodling around and looked at Rancho Palos Verdes. But uh, Matt probably knows about that ordinance, incredibly expansive view shed ordinance. Um, in, in, in terms of the, the ability to challenge things, it's not only the foliage, it's the structure there as well. That uh can be limiting when it uh is going to interfere with the view. So, um, the, the constant issue of the protection of ridge lines. And the protection of view sheds are, we're talking about them together, but they're kind of a separate problem. Uh, they're, yeah, they're related, but they're sort of separate, and I, I certainly think that. Probably the most important thing we need to do is focus on the ridge line protection, but I wouldn't ignore the, the potential. Uh, view as well. And one other comment I make is the city of Hillsborough in Northern California. Has a very interesting view shed ordinance. Uh, because they not only protect views, but they protect privacy. So if, if you want to cut down a bunch of trees on your property that have been there for a long time, that have provided privacy to your neighbor. Uh, you've got to go through a process and an antedispute resolution procedure. Uh, so that's a very interesting uh proposition too. It's not only the view, it's the, it's the privacy presented by trees and. Structures that have been there for some time. Um, so it's a, it's a very difficult, these are very difficult issues, but I, I again. Um, echo what everyone else has said, Maureen, on a fabulous. Uh, presentation and, and, and just showing us all the complexities of what we're dealing with. Um, but I think this is very important stuff that, that we ought to, we ought to not just. You know, stick it in the library. We need to get on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said, and, and I. We agree with everything that, that, that you just said. Um. Commissioner Leah.
Yes, uh. I'll be brief. In evaluating this information and coming up with recommendations to city council, I for one would find it very, very helpful to have. A, call it a spreadsheet. List the four cities that we have and what they have, and on the right side, the Calabasas equivalent, if any. And then we can go through and look what overall is best for the city.
Thank you.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. Any other comments? All right. So, we will move on to, uh. Do we know when, Maureen, do we have any idea when this is going to come back to us for action?
Well, you've got um. Conclusion of your housing element updates. That's going to be coming uh. Uh, next month. That will probably uh. Uh. Be the last major effort right now of the planning department. Um, I don't see any uh. Efforts on um. And new initiative for continuation of this program. Until the open planning positions are filled. And Tom will be giving you a short update on that. And um, it could take um, a period of up to at least six months just. To get a new person at the helm. And put their arms around a work plan. Um, it's not necessarily that this work plan that, that we have been working on will continue and re-over. Other pieces, I think, um, I don't see budgeting. Uh, for this um, coming into um. This current fiscal cycle, so you're looking at the next fiscal cycle, so it's actually a year from now. For any real definitive work, let's say that you wanted to. Uh, the part of your recommendation is to go forward and. Remap or do combination mapping and expanding of your corridors. Um, that alone would have to be a budgeted piece to the council. So it, it's gonna take some time.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, um. I think we are on to the director's report.
Tom's gonna do that.
Oh, okay. I think I, oh, I'm unmuted. Good. Well, um. I guess I'll start just to keep this particular theme um continuous for now. Since the question was raised on timing for what we were just discussing, discussing, um. Some of the major efforts we're still working on, and I don't have any dates I can give you for when we're gonna bring it to the commission. Is we, of course, had to update, we have to update the circulation element of the general plan. Under state law. As a companion effort to the housing element update we just completed. And the same is true for the safety element, so we've been very busy with both of those. And we're coordinating with Public Works and our public safety staff. And we'll be, of course, having to get input from those respective commissions. And eventually, and then, of course, bringing it to the planning commission ahead of council. So those are substantial projects that we're already working on. In terms of a long-range planning effort. We also have implementation obligations for the housing element that's already been adopted. Um, one of the first of which is substantial in its own right, and that's the affordable housing development that. We would hope to accomplish through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And a state housing development grant focused on affordable housing. Which would be three point two million dollars plus, and we're already basically pre-awarded for that, but we have a lot of work. A substantial amount of work to actually get everything in line to now. Um, get that awarded. And to proceed with a project that would be able to use those funds. So, um. When you add the Craftsman's Corner annexation, which also moves to the forefront because of our housing element having identified housing sites within that territory. Those are four huge, long-range planning efforts. For which, to be honest, we don't right now have staff to complete. So, we won't be able to bring this particular effort to the commission. Anytime in the close future. But I do want to remind the commissioners that those are things underway. In terms of actual projects going to meetings in the future. Um. And exemptions to short-term rentals, which is like the vacation rental thing. We are hopefully on target to go to the council with something like that. Um, at the first part of the year, don't have a specific date I can give you, the earliest would be January twelfth. Um, in terms of the commission. That it, was there a question? Okay.
It was just some feedback.
Okay. Uh, we have this, we had the sign program, you just saw, um, a variance for. And I think it's a home addition at Park Serena. Um, is a possible item for your next meeting, the first one in January. Our notes show that it's tentative for now. And that's the only item I have at least pending for commission review. Within the next month. The Historic Preservation Commission, we're hoping to get organized for a meeting in January. So that they would be a look at a proposal for memorial bench. This will be one of the first things that. Will be reviewed by them under the uh guidelines and procedures that were adopted by the city council. I think it was in. March or April, May, first part of the year. Uh, for donated memorials, so we're on target to have the first one of those go to HPC and then it would carry on for approval to council. Um, we'll also, of course, do some goal setting, which is something we're required under state law to do with our commission. Uh, every year. So we are working on getting the HPC. To have a meeting in January. CTC is going to be looking at a wireless. Uh, status update is what our notes show. Michael Klein is on target for doing that in January at their meeting. Uh, if you'll remember, the CTC does have. A planning commission authority for wireless facilities when they're proposed under the city's ordinances. Um. Community Development Director hearings, we had four items that actually were heard yesterday. All of them administrative plan review and all were determined to be. One hundred percent consistent with the development code. And uh, those were approved. We have one item. Um, possibly going for that hearing in January, another one. Later in January, both of them tentative for right now. Architecture review panel, looks like they may have a number of items at their next meeting, which is at the end of January. Uh. Four, as many as four. And it looks like from the addresses. They would, three of them would be residential homes. Additions, and the other one would be a patio covered of commercial business. So in terms of future meetings that we're having to cover and review projects for, that gives you. An idea of the next four to six weeks. Just after the holiday for the most part.
All right, thank you. Um. A couple of things, uh, first, I had identified at the outset of the meeting, I identified this as the meeting of December seventeen. My calendar had flipped days. Today is actually December sixteen, so. I just wanted to correct that. Um, also, I. I don't know, Maureen, are you still on? Is this? Is this your last? Is this your last meeting with us?
Yes.
Okay, well, then I don't.
I just wanna say thank you to everyone, perhaps, maybe. Um, you could all stay up, call after you conclude.
Okay, well, I, I do, before, before we conclude, I just. I wanted to thank you for. Many, many, many years of service to this city. Um, I. Think that. We should recognize the length, depth and breadth. Of your contribution to the city and um. You know, your, your background, your knowledge, your experience has been invaluable, so I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Anyone else have uh any reports from any of the other commissioners? Uh, Commissioner Washburn?
Well, I just want to uh add to your generous description of all of the things that Maureen has done, but I've worked with Maureen. As a council member, mayor and. Planning commissioner, and now there isn't actually much in the way of structures in the city of Calabasas that Maureen's. Fingerprints aren't on, and the design, the architectural, the aesthetic. And. I guess a community spirit aspects of what a, a really good planning or director of planning and development can do. Are set because of all the, the hard work that Maureen has done over all these years. So, I'm gonna miss you a lot. And uh, you're gonna see most of our names on the buildings or the, you know, the resolutions and whatever, but, you know. The initiatives have come from Maureen and her staff and the leadership that's been provided, so thank you so much.
Commissioner Mueller?
Yes, and just, I, I want to uh. Echo what uh. Has been said about Maureen and, and add is probably the longest-serving planning commissioner, probably spent more time. Uh, with you. Uh, in these meetings, and you have just been an absolute delight to work with. And I think one thing that people don't realize about Maureen. Is how much she is respected and loved by the members of the community. I have, I have friends who have told me that they've. She's incredibly responsive to citizen requests about what's going on and then fill in the blank. She gets back to people, I mean, within an hour or less. When they have a request for what's happening with development X, and she is. Well-loved by this community, not just by the commissioners and, and the council, but just. By, by our citizens as well, and I, I hope you know that, Maureen, and I think everybody on this commission knows that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Harrison?
Well, I just wanted to agree with what Dennis and John said, and I've enjoyed working with Maureen since. She came here and we were working on the new civic center uh, uh, committee or whatever it was, uh, and uh. Uh, Maureen has been so helpful for our city, it's, it's, it's hard to uh. Uh, go into, you know, complete detail and all of that, but uh, I'll miss her too.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Right, I guess the, 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 the summation of, the summation of all that is. You will be greatly missed. And you have been greatly appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, um. I think that, I think that wraps it up. Uh. We have a motion to, we have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, I will move to adjourn in honor of Maureen Terbury.
Second.
And I'm. Sure that that is echoed among all commissioners.
You're here.
Uh, we are, we are adjourned in honor of and, and recognition of Maureen tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
At all.
Bon voyage.
Au revoir.
Thank you, everybody. It's hard for me to talk. It's hard for me to. Leave a place I love so much. I, I really wish you well. What I can do for anyone in this city, please call. I'm always happy to help. So. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen.
Start.
We love you.
And don't be a stranger, come on back sometime.
Absolutely.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night, Maureen.
Good night.